To the server and we are now recording. Alright, so I called this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. I recognize that I am President Abdullah is President Ilse is present, Justin is present, Ryan is present, Scott is present, and Zain is present. Scott, please. Um, if you guys could go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen as you can see the agenda we have. Share Google Chrome, not my. Um, so this is our agenda with the link attached. I'll be doing this in the future. I'll put the the link up here so you guys have it. And I apologize for the late agenda getting out today. It did not occur to me today was Friday. Um, so we'll be talking about the other section of off-campus events today. And then we'll determine whether or not we want to pass final legislation on them. Um, we have uh five clubs and six requests we'll be looking at, so it should be relatively simple. Um. If there are clubs that we can fully fund, we should be able to fully fund everyone because we have enough in the funds to do that compared to how many requests we got. Uh, but there might be some clubs that we have issues with funding based on the nature of their requests. So if they do, we'll ask them to come in during the next meetings, talk about that. Um, but in the future, most of the clubs we've been coming on the meetings that we're doing the discussion. So these are the five clubs we're looking at and the six requests, the FBVRs are attached. You guys should have access to those. Uh, Dula, do you have access to the survey monkey?
I do.
Alright, fantastic. Uh, so this is what we're doing. Is there a motion? And we should end by eight o'clock. If we end earlier, we can adjourn to end earlier. That's not a problem. Uh, that being said, is there a motion on the floor regarding our agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Our second? Second, alright, any objections? Here, no objections. The motion passes with general consent. Uh, we won't look at meeting minutes until next time where we'll do both the meeting minutes uh for both these meetings. So let's go ahead and get started. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and pull up the. Please go away. There you go. This is our official copy. Going over to the neither section, this is what we are dealing with. Uh, so we have these six requests coming in. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and start with Catholic Retrievers since they're at the top. This is FBBR 353. So if you guys want to go ahead and open that one up on your respective computers. Justin, could you once again monitor the chat?
Three fifty-three.
Yes. Three.
Justin, would you be able to monitor the chat for this meeting? Or if not, that's okay. Just let me know.
Again.
Five, three fifty-three has no advisor signature.
Was submitted.
Who signed the advisor form?
Um, Jared Richard.
Uh, can we confirm that Jared Richard is not the advisor of Catholic Retrievers?
We set this application back to him.
Yeah, Jared's not the advisor to Catholic Retrievers.
Yes, I I moved everything regardless if they were able to be passed or not into the review stage because I'm not doing anything by myself.
Um, I think this is one that he had messaged us and we had sent it back to him because he accidentally put in his name for the advisor approval. Um, is this another one in a situation where if we can get an email from their actual advisor saying it's okay, then would you guys be okay with passing it?
Sure.
Alright.
Well, is this the same on on their other? Because they have two requests. Is it the same for both of them or is this?
I believe so.
Alright, I'd like to move to table FBVRs three fifty-three and four ten. Uh, until we get an advisor request back, which we will set them and give them a deadline of Monday at five thirty PM.
Are you ready?
Say again?
Who's emailing them again?
Um, I'll go ahead and email for this one.
Okay.
Alright, um, that means that we're gonna table those two. Um, actually, quick discussion on them. If the advisor forum comes back, does anyone have any other issues with the requests? Would you guys be okay with fully funding these should the advisor signature come back? Any thoughts?
Hmm.
Go ahead.
Um, I think it, I think it's fine. Otherwise, for three fifty-three, I haven't looked at.
Alright, Candace?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. That was awkward. Um. Do you think, do you think it would be? I know Liam, you said that you would be willing to reach out to the to the um org. Do you think maybe that could be? And and this is also a question for you, Scott, some work that the TST can do? Um, since.
They already did.
And he didn't respond?
I just texted Lassia to see if she has anything in her inbox.
Okay, um, but if they haven't gotten anything, like, because you're saying you want to reach out to them one more time, right?
Yes, I wasn't aware they had been reached out to in the prior thought.
Yeah.
They were also a group I reached out to whenever I did my sweep through as well.
So I'm just trying to think about how we, how you can share the virtual load of this work. Um, and so. Saying, yeah.
Who's the liaison for Catholic Retrievers? Nithya, would you be open to contacting Jared and Jared? Uh, to see if their advisor can send an email to the Finance Board shared box or myself or Candace, just being like, hey, I approved these two events. Thank you so much. You're a hero.
Are you, so we see if they respond to the TST or are you just gonna?
Yeah, let's, yeah, I'd say let's wait until we see if they responded.
Yep. Alright, I'm just, uh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I understand what you're saying. I I get what you're doing, Liam.
While we wait for a response to that, um, let's go ahead and move on to FBVR three eighty, which is Rifle and Pistol Club. This is their to the range, home on the range. And they are requesting a total of eighty-two dollars and ninety-five cents for supplies. I believe if I'm appropriately, these supplies are um. Earplug, earplugs and safety goggles, sorry.
And targets.
And targets, oh, I get it.
They have their advisor's signature? I think.
Believe so, yes.
Looks like it. Oh.
What's our stance on when quote-unquote summer ends?
Also have their hand raised.
Uh, yeah, uh, Zane and then Ilse, sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I just wanted to interrupt. Um, so it. I guess just making sure that because they have four non-UMBC undergraduate attendance and seven UMBC undergraduate attendance. Um, so I guess just making it clear that the materials like need to be like used for undergraduate students.
We can include that. Um, Elsa? Or Zane, is that all?
Yeah, that's the only thing I had.
Alright, Elsa, go ahead.
So, moving forward, are we going to allow clubs who are just missing like application, like, oh, sorry, their advisor approval forms? Um, to sort of like send that in post like the submission deadline?
No, so the reason why we're allowing it for Catholic Retrievers is because Jared did reach out to us prior to the submission deadline, indicating that he had mistakenly filled out the advisor section. And Candace and I worked to send the application back to him or reopened it so that he could do that. But it was still listed as submitted since that was the last page of it. And I think issues came from there because we reopened it to him and I think within like twenty-four hours, the campus had decided to close itself, so.
Got it.
Yeah, this one, the the only success we're extending this for, and I'll talk about this with another uh club later, is only for clubs that did email us prior to the deadline, indicating that they were having issues with the submission.
Okay, makes sense.
Alright. Uh, yes, put your hands down. Um, alright, so I will, we can make a note uh on the uh form that we send out to the Rifle and Pistol Club that they need to have, their their funds need to only be used for undergraduate students. Is that right? Everyone go with that? Uh, Candace, that's not.
I'm gonna go first then. Um, so Lassia did not get a response um from Jared. That's how.
Understood. So, Nithya, if you shoot down the message, it'll be their quote-unquote last chance. Uh, let them know that if they don't have, uh, they need to respond by Monday at five thirty PM. Candace?
I think you should have their advisor has to respond by then.
Yes, that's, sorry, yeah, the advisor email has to be in by five thirty PM.
I didn't have anything. I forgot to lower my hand.
You're good. No worries.
Did I do that?
Yep, you're good.
Nice.
Alright, uh, that being said, uh, is everyone good with fully funding for Rifle and Pistol Club? Alright.
Didn't we fund some, our goggles, one-time use only?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, next is Black Lives Matter. This is their uh trip to the Reginald F. Lewis Museum. This is FBVR four oh seven. If you guys want to go ahead and open that up. This is covering uh registration and travel. For a total of seven hundred and ten dollars.
So. Um. I don't know if it is excessive, but they're having twenty-five people. And they want um five hundred and ten dollars to get to Baltimore.
Yeah, is this for a bus?
Yeah.
Alright, I believe in the past, we haven't funded stuff like that. I think we did the same thing for CPAC. Or another organization or crew or something.
What did you do for UMBC's?
Oh, yeah, Scooba, that was it. Sorry, CPAC also other companies in that area. Um, but yeah, for Scooba, I think we decided to deny them bus funding because they could use UMBC Transit.
Um, it says UMBC busing in their request, question mark?
I I think what Liam is saying is that they can take the free UMBC bus as opposed to. Chartering a bus, yes.
Then go ahead.
Oh, and just, it's a little confusing in their request because what section is it? Um, they say that they're going to like. Get together and then drive, like, drive to the museum. So I thought that implied like they were using cars, but then, yeah, I did see the busing thing, so I I'm assuming that they're trying to do like a charter, which I don't, I think is kind of excessive.
So I would, I would move to strike travel costs from um, application four oh seven.
Alright, there's a second. Um. Put your hand down because I'm gonna do it all on favor. Put your hands up. Alright, all opposed, put your hands up or put your hands down now. And then all opposed, put your hands up. Alright, uh, five to one, the motion carries will be striking it. Alright, um, I'll just make a note in this because this is our official copy, so. Sort of comment. Um, alright, up next is UMBC. Dargo here. The warrior. I apologize, I can't pronounce this. Um, I believe it's.
Gaming word, right?
Yeah, I believe it's, this is the LARPing Club, right?
Yeah.
Alright, um, so this is their uh gear build session. They are requesting, oh, yeah, my apologies, this is FBVR uh four zero nine. They're requesting a total of ninety-six dollars and fifteen cents in supplies for the building.
So, in the TST notes, um, the purpose of the event is to help newcomers become familiar with the skills and resources necessary. So I don't know if it's a recruitment or not based off of that.
Um, comments before I step in? Alright, um, personally, I would argue that it's not if they're teaching new members because that would imply that they already have, the members have already agreed to join. It said gathering new members. I think I'd be more in there, but. Um, I think it's a nuance that the board could specify.
Okay.
Any comments?
Yeah, I agree with Liam. I think it's not necessarily something that's like geared towards recruitment. At least I didn't read it like that. I don't know.
Alright. Um, does anyone have any other comments or before we uh make a decision?
It also seems like it's an on-campus event.
Well, for their location, they put undecided. I'm assuming they plan on building it off-campus.
Okay.
Yeah, alright, um, so does anyone have any objections to fully funding four oh nine? Oh, Justin, go ahead.
So, fly building, would that be considered like equipment or not?
Not under equipment committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's the same as um the way you, yeah, the way, well, the way you have treated um Baja and snowmobile like that the the parts bill to something bigger and that's um, fine.
Will be used.
Right, right. And that the, but like the activity is the process of the building of the stuff. And so it would not be considered um equipment and it's not electronic as well. Thank you very much, Nithya Prakash. Hey, look who's that? Abdullah? Who dat?
His name's Ollie.
Oh, hey, Ollie, you know, because this is an open meeting, right? So, but yeah, not equipped, long, long and short, not equipment.
Should we move on then?
Yep, any objections to fully funding? Raise your hand now. Alright, cool. Up next is Major Definition. Uh, this is the, an annual showcase and benefit concept that we'll be going to. Major Definition is a limited funding organization. Um, so this, and I believe this competition is just for their members to go. But the FBVR is four sixty-three, so I would check that. Um, because they have submitted applications in the past, so I'd be surprised if they have an alternate.
So I'm I'm confused about that distinction. Um. What is different about a limited funding organization going than like an organization that only has members compete such as like moot court or mock trial?
Because anyone can be a member of moot court or mock trial. Um, granted, you might not make it to the eighteen, but like you still have a chance to be there. Um, it's based wholly on your determination versus uh a limited funding like major definition where it's someone else's determination on whether or not you can be a member and go. Um, since they have.
Also charging UMBC students five dollars.
I assume that'd be general admission. Uh, Candace, go ahead.
I would, I would advise to get um clarification from that group about what that five dollar charge is. That would be my advice.
Alright, any other comments?
It seems like the five dollar cost is split up into their their registration costs and travel costs. And that they're fully funding themselves.
Hold on, we got a lot from Nithya, but my chat window isn't open. Charges are based on past year's ticket prices, which are set by Slam. Um, last year, tickets were five dollars pre-sale, eight dollars online and ten at the door. Performers wouldn't have to pay.
So it's performers don't have to pay, but like they're going to perform, right?
I think it's so. Interpreted the students or just how much it would cost for someone else and just put that information there. But I do consider that it might be worth bringing the club in and asking them.
Aren't we able to categorically fund this if they're limited funding, Tori Heesler?
Um, I mean, I think that's more on your decisions than mine. Um, limited funding, usually we only see those requests for on-campus, so normally in limited funding groups haven't requested for off-campus things in the past. Um, Elsie said I have seen, so this is uncharted waters for me personally. Um, I think you would have to consider if like the stilettos came in and asked for funding to compete. Or any of our a cappella groups or, you know, stuff like that, or if any of the limited funding orgs wanted to go to a conference, things, you know, how would you? How would you think about that? Um, but also just, uh, I had my hand up too, but just the travel in here is listed as what they believe a tank of gas would cost. Or is it train tickets? Now, this is a per-person estimate for approximate a quarter to a half a tank of gas and they have fifty dollars for travel, so you might have to do um mileage for that. Because it's to, I think, what to say, John Hopkins, Johns Hopkins.
Yeah. Alright, I think definitely this club needs more explanation. Um, we okay with um table in the discussion and, or does anyone have any other frontal discussion points before we move?
I don't see necessarily like any reason to fund it as it's limited funding. And essentially, it just really seems like we'd be funding for the performers to be going to Johns Hopkins. I don't know, that's my opinion.
Yeah, no, that's what it kind of looks like to me too. Um. You guys want to vote to deny now or would you rather wait and hear them on Tuesday? Um, we'll straw poll. Option one is to wait till Tuesday. Option two is to vote now. Type a one or two in the chat.
Forgot the option.
Can you like say the options again, please?
I'm gonna attack them, you guys.
Let me close vote now. Wait, did you change the options?
What?
What? Ryan, what did you do? What's happening?
Ryan, you just got played, boy. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
The option was definitely to vote now.
Everyone stop typing.
Alright, alright, option, I'm I'm changing it up, but I'm typing both them at the same time.
Can I participate in your straw poll?
Yes, you are, especially. Alright, option one and two are written there. Now you may vote.
We have discussion while they're taking.
Yeah.
Scott, what's your reasoning?
Um, if we're not if we're not gonna like categorically deny them because they're limited funding. Um. I would rather just hear what they have to say.
That everyone's votes? Shouldn't be.
Just curious, what are you hoping to ask them that you can't see from your application?
Who are you talking to?
Scott or Tori?
Um, I think there needs, like, there should be clarification on where they got their numbers from. I think that all of the numbers are very confusing. Um, as far as the tank of gas or the gas and then there's two different student charges or whatever in there. Just, I think clarification at least would be nice in general. Unless you all decide just to not fund the limited funding for this, then I think that's a different conversation completely.
Alright, well, in a five to four decision, we will be voting now on them. Um. So, that being said, I'm assuming the vote is to categorically deny. Is that correct? Anyone?
And this would be precedent.
Yes, this would set precedent for funding for limited funding organizations. Alright. We're gonna go ahead and and do a vote. Oh, Candace and then Zane first.
Um, does it, does it set a precedent? Because who, Tori had mentioned something about a, an a cappella group. Oh, no, you're right. Okay, I see what Nithya is saying for off-campus events. So it sets a precedent for the funding of off-campus events for limited funding groups. When it's that their members going to something, it would be different, I suppose, if they were trying to organize where they took a bunch of people to something and anybody could sign up for that trip, right?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure that's clear for the record.
You're good, but as it's saying a seven people and then a bunch of non-graduate, that's the, alright, Zane, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna make the other point of like in like groups outside, like obviously this will set precedent, but like if you're even thinking about like um, a fraternity or something that wants to go to a conference. Um, like, I think obviously, it being limited in membership that these types of groups that if they're just gonna take their members and it is an off-campus event. That, um, I don't think it's in like the best interest of us to be like funding that directly.
Um, alright. Uh, so we're gonna go ahead and proceed into a vote on funding. Uh, give me a second. I have to check one thing real quick. Just have to see where we are. You can also take the time to appreciate all the work you've done this year. Alright, Dean, is the legislation tracker up to date?
No.
Okay, alright, what's the last one that we passed then?
I would just mark it now as voting to categorically deny and then pass legislation later.
Sure, everyone okay with doing that? Alright. Where is it? Here we go. Alright, um. So. Uh, we'll be using hand raises again. Uh, and this is for a category denied. So, all in favor of denying major definition funding, raise your hand. So, all in favor of denying major definition funding, raise your hand now. Alright, thanks, Nithia. And hands down? And opposed? Ryan, are you opposed? Sorry. Alright, six for, one against, one abstaining, one not present, and we will be denying funding to major def.
And you added a notes column into this, right?
Me?
Yeah.
No, I've been using comments.
Oh, comments, okay, that's fine too. I know you had said something about making comments, but I wasn't sure what that meant.
Yeah, no, a- actual comments, comments. It's not funny on that, we are approving rifle and pistol, or approving back there. We are waiting to hear back on Catholic Retrievers and we're cutting transportation, but we're funding everything else for Black Lives Matter. Uh, yes, Justin, Clefthos are limited funding because they have, um, auditions. Alright, well, that being said, we're already done with the neither category. Nice work, guys. Um, so, because for the other clubs, we will have to be doing cuts and we prefer to have them there. Um, and also I anticipated that neither was gonna have a bit more debate before I realized how much we had in there, so again, that's on me this weekend, still trying to catch up, but this weekend I've dedicated my entire Saturday and Sunday morning to finance board stuff, so you will have full agendas and the schedule will be out and all of that good stuff. Um, but in the meantime, we're gonna be looking at conferences next. So these are all the conferences we have available that we'll be looking at. We have Students for Life, AICHE, UMBC, YDSA, NSV, Model UN. That should be a competition. Oh, maybe, I don't know. Oh, no, it's a regional model, never mind, this is where it belongs. Uh, pre-vet and then two from crew. Total amount being requested is thirty-seven thousand dollars and we have sixteen thousand to be allocated, so things are definitely gonna get cut, uh, here. So, this is the sheet, it's called official copy of the Fall 2020 Off-Campus Budgets. It's in the Finance Board folder under Fall 2020 Budgets. I will, am requiring you guys to look over all of these requests and leave notes in the note section of Survey Monkey with your thoughts on each one. The FBVRs are listed here, so you can look at them here. Um, but yes, please look over all of these and leave a note. It can be something as simple as vote, uh, wood fund or yes, be complicated as, you know, anything with notes that you wanna put down, um, but make sure that you have something there. Scott, go ahead.
Are we looking at both conference and competition on Monday? Is that what you said?
Uh, no, we will only be looking at, um, conferences on Monday.
Alright.
Uh, because there's a decent amount here, I anticipate that, um, if you want, I can have competitions on deck, but it also means we'd have to get to them and message them at some point, uh, so that the people for competition could come in and talk as well. Um, we can make a vote on that now, if you guys would rather do, try and get conferences and competitions done on Tuesday or to do the, uh, separate it out where we do conferences on Tuesday and competitions on Friday. So what are you guys' thoughts on that? Um, you okay with doing a straw poll? Any objections to that? I'm typing the options in the chat. Do I need debate and discussion before I do this?
I think we can knock them both out. Keep in mind that there are a hundred and fifty-one applications total. So we gotta do them at some point.
Alright, those are the two options. Please cast your votes now.
Have a question.
Go for it.
What's the approximate number for each of them?
The totals for each event?
Like how many, yeah, how many events are in each category?
Um, let me move all this out of this way. We have eight events for conference and we have thirteen events for competition.
We would be doing twenty applications. And took us less than half an hour to do six.
Wow, Scott, that's a pretty big number, but it's not one of the options. I'm gonna have to invalidate this vote.
I think you should count each one individually.
Ah, but I see that the super delegates of democracy are working. This is four in favor of doing both on Tuesday and three in favor of doing one-on-one. So we're gonna go ahead and do both on Tuesday, so feel free to, or not feel free, you must you must look over all of the conference and competition requests and leave a note in the Survey Monkey under the review thing, so when you go into Survey Monkey, hold up, I gotta move all this stuff out of the way. Oh my god, that's terrifying. I just saw a spider fly through the window.
See you with the flyby.
Yeah, so you must leave a review here under those FBVRs. The application numbers are in the sheet, but I will be sending them out to you via agenda on Sunday at five thirty PM. So they're in this sheet right here, which is called official copy, Fall 2020 Off-Campus Budgets. You can find it in the SGA shared folder. If you go to SJ shared folder, Finance Board, all twenty twenty budget requests, and it's the official copy, which is this one right here, but it got renamed. Doc, go ahead.
Yo, what?
Your hands up.
My man.
Well. You trolling. Yeah, the numbers on the spreadsheet there, uh, you must leave a comment. That's my way of seeing that you all have looked at that request and understand it. At least enough to debate and discuss on it. Um, for those of you who are definitely wondering, YDSA is only highlighted because their conference is in the summer, so we'll probably go ahead and be denying them. We don't fund summer events. That being said, our agenda for next, uh, Tuesday will include both conferences and competitions. We'll be starting off with conferences and then going to competitions. The way that it's going to work is that we're gonna have appointment slots available on the Finance Board calendar that clubs will sign up for. Dean and I will be sending emails out to them, uh, later tonight or early tomorrow. Basically saying that if they would like a chance to come and speak to the board, they can sign up for a five-minute slot. That five-minute slot will be three minutes for them to talk, two minutes for questions and answers, uh, from the board to them. We're going to be making these slots available half an hour for each of them, or we might extend that out a little bit more depending on how many people sign up. Um, but we're gonna try and limit club inputs that much and only have them come in if they have something they need to clarify, something they need to say. We'll also be asking all these clubs to be on standby to be able to be ready to enter in case they're needed during this timeframe, so we will have access to the clubs. Um, and we'll be passing legislation at that meeting as well. Any questions? I know you guys are good, but wow, you guys are good. Um, alright, that being said, again, just make sure to look over those. We'll have legislation tracking updated by then and clubs will be able to come in. Uh, if you have any further questions, just feel free to message me or I'll be on the call after we end. Uh, that being said, does anyone have any announcements? If you live, my announcement is this, if you live on campus, you should have received an email from ResLife Services. Um, I got you, Candace. Uh, you should have received a message from ResLife Services basically saying that you have to sign up for your move-out time. Nithia so helpfully put all those links in the Slack, so snaps to her. Um, but please make sure you sign up for those times so you can prep your move-out. Candace, go ahead.
Um, I forgot what it was. Oh, in case you haven't seen, there was an email that came out about refunds. Ah, yes, refunds, there it is. Um, it, does anybody have any questions about it?
Getting all my money. Zane, go ahead.
Um, how does that work if they're gonna give back the student activity fee?
Yeah, that's what I was fishing for. Um, yeah, I think, so I, I talked to Jen about it a little bit because I saw that email and I was like, oh. Um, basically, you know, the university, like, the system came out and said students are gonna get refunds, and then they like went all over the news. And UMBC is like, okay, we gotta send something, so they sent out this email and, um, the people whose pay grades are way above ours are gonna figure out what the total is, right? And then of like, okay, we have this many students and we need to refund them this much. And then it's gonna sort of get cut, like, um, sort of spread out. Um, we, student, the student activities fee is that one million dollars plus pot of money, but it's not all just the money that you all, you all play with, right? Like, some of that money is going to SEB and some of that money is going to the retriever. And they aren't, they don't have real costs like they did if we were on campus, right? SEB isn't putting on events. They're not putting on Quad Mania. Um, so there's real save, you know, like, all of the events that we're supposed, right? F in the chat, yeah, for Quad Mania. Um, the, all of the events that you all were gonna put out, that the student orgs were gonna put on, those aren't happening. So, you know, the thought was, oh, that money would roll over, roll to the reserve. But in reality, what's gonna end up happening is like you all are gonna have actually spent less and then have a space, some space, and there's gonna be space from the student activities fee of money that isn't being spent because there's no students to spend it on. So, yeah, it should go back to the students. Um, do I think that there's gonna be any real hit, any feeling? Do I think the, like, the reserves are gonna feel any of this? No, I don't. Um, it's all imaginary money and the, and, and, you know, like, you're not, you're not, your reserves aren't gonna feel it. It's gonna be some accounting work and I think everybody's gonna be fine, honestly. Um, but I think they just felt some pressure to send something out because it was on the news. So there's that. And I can understand how you might feel some tensions around like yay, I'm getting some money back, and it says this fee that SJ is responsible for, like, there's a tension there, right? So.
Imaginary money.
Uh, I just had another question, Liam.
Yeah, uh, one question from Nithia first, then we'll go back to you if that's. Nithia wants to know how she makes a payment request through the state.
What do you mean? How do you make a payment request through the state? I don't understand.
I'm assuming this is the refund request, but I'll wait till she types in the chat or talks.
Automatic.
They're just gonna automatically do it. Um.
You have a bank mobile profile, though.
That's how you pay for it at school.
Says, however, students without bank mobile profiles will be refunded via payment requests. I think that UMBC is gonna be doing payment requests for you and then the check's gonna, the state's gonna cut you a check. I think that's what that means, but I can get some clarity on that for you. That's, that's probably a question other students have too.
Be much appreciated.
Put that in my, put that in my asana.
Okay, does that answer, or your question to the best of its ability?
I gave her a non-answer, so.
The best of the ability. Um, Zane, go ahead.
Oh, I was just wondering if like payroll is still on schedule, so should we expect our checks on the same day?
Yes, you're getting paid. You're getting paid. You're getting paid on the third. Yep, you're getting paid.
Making sure.
I got you.
I guess this is the important thing to note. Hello, Victor. Uh, welcome. Uh, any other announcements?
Now we good.
Alright, um, that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting at six forty-eight PM. I recognize that I am present, Abdullah is present, Ilse is present, Justin's present, Nithia is present, Ryan is present, Scott is present, and Zane is present. Along with our ex-facials, our secretaries, my friends. Alright, and with that, we are adjourned. Let me stop sharing my screen and cut the recording.